Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to today's special city council meeting. This is a budget address for 2017. Today is Tuesday, July 26th, and we're certainly glad to have everybody in attendance, including our Sioux Falls media team as well. I'd like to start our meeting by introducing you to your city council.
Council members Erickson here. Urban Bach here. Kylie here. Nitzer here. Rolfing here. Selberg here. Starr here. Staley here.
Counselors, thank you for being in attendance today as well. Certainly appreciate it. We are starting this special meeting with an invocation. We're very, very blessed to have Pastor Bickel here with the Ethiopian Christian Fellowship Church here in Sioux Falls. It's a congregation of about 55 good folks here in Sioux Falls. Pastor, thank you for being here. The pastor has been in Sioux Falls for about 26 years and has been serving as a pastor for about 13 years. And now he's here before us today to lead us in that invocation. What we'd ask you is to stand, please, and then remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Bickel, welcome.
Thank you for the privilege. I'm going to pray based on the Scripture First Timothy 2:1-3. Father God, I am praying for the city officials, pastors, school board, law enforcement, judges, and other government and community leaders throughout our towns, cities, state, and nation. Father God, I pray for all those in authority to let them receive the wisdom of God, to act in obedience to that wisdom, and for the power of God to reveal in their lives. I also pray that you will help them to think clearly in every decision they make. Grant them discernment and common sense so there will be strong and effective leaders. A house divided against itself cannot stand. Therefore, I pray for all the leaders to be unified in righteousness for the sake of the nation. I pray for your divine protection to cover all of our law enforcement officers and the men and the women of the military. I ask for the godly counsel and wisdom for the judges across the land. I pray this in the name of Jesus.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselors, thank you, and also I want to thank everybody in the audience today. I've not done this before, but as I looked out in the audience, I saw my wife Cindy is here. I've not done this before, but she is the first lady of Sioux Falls. She's surprising me here by being in attendance, and I just want to recognize her, if you don't mind, honey. City councilors, I'd like to welcome you here today, and I especially want to make a special welcome to the new city councilors. One of the things that I've enjoyed the most as the mayor or being in public service is what you're going to be going through right now, and that is the budgeting process, the capital budgeting process, the operating budgeting process. And it is something that truly is so critical as part of your role, and I think you're truly going to enjoy it. Sioux Falls today is a 2017 budget address where I'll talk not only about the budget as a whole, but we'll dig deeper into that general fund or that operating budget as well. So let's kick it off. Probably just one of maybe some lessons learned, especially to the new councilors, are the following. This prioritizing of the taxpayer dollars is so unbelievably hard, but it's also, it's so critical, too. Here's just some of the things that you're going to get a flavor for. Number one, everyone wants what they want. That's a reality. Nothing is for free. I would strongly encourage us not to be beholden by special interest groups because when governments are beholden to them, you're going to have some bad government will ultimately be the results when those special interests are in control. You already know this, coming out of the blocks, tough decisions must be made. But I think as long as we focus on the citizens as a whole or the city as a whole, we're going to be in good shape. And yes, I just strongly believe this, that ultimately our citizens lose when we, as public servants, we kind of kick that can down the road. I am so unbelievably thrilled by this budget, and I'm going to tell you more as we go. But one of the things when I was elected and I came from corporate America is I did have some goals in terms of what I was hoping that we could accomplish as a city team. And I will tell you that our city budgeting process has come a long, long way. You know, our department and financial analysts, they are working in collaboration at a level that I don't think we've ever seen before. And in fact, our financial analysts, they are leading this process, and I think that's critical as you're looking for opportunities and trying to identify risks. This investment in technology that we've made, it has really just paid for itself in monumental ways. This is reality, folks. I mean, I came to you back when I first started and said, "We want to invest about $1.5 million in new financial management software." Seriously, $1.5 million. But the reality is, is that we were using technology, no kidding, from the 1980s to run these huge budgets within the city of Sioux Falls. And so much has changed along with that financial management software. So that investment has paid off, as well as things like our new EnterGov software, which was another $1.3 million, but it is reaping rewards and paying dividends. With the help of our entire team, we are finding more opportunities. We're identifying some risks. And one thing, too, that we've changed now is we do have our HR team and our central services team, they're involved every step of the process. This should be no secret to anyone. I said it before, and I'm going to say it again, Sioux Falls, we are strong financially. We are. Our sales tax revenues are growing. Let me repeat that. Our sales tax revenues are growing. In this budget council, we are using more cautious revenue projections. We are. In 2017, we are projecting that we're going to increase our revenues by about 4% when it comes to sales tax revenues. And that is kind of in line of where we're at right now in 2016. And it should be also no secret that we are adjusting our spending levels in 2016. We started that pretty quickly out of the blocks. We have Governor Dugard in Pierre, he and his team, they were more cautious in terms of some of that spending. They got in front of it, and in city government, we have done that exact same thing. Right now, our 12-month rolling growth rate from June to June is about 4.1% versus our planned rate of about 6%. So again, I want to make sure that you're fully aware of that. Lot of good news here in our city. We are breaking these construction records again. What you see in front of you is the largest level of construction through the month of June that we've ever had in our city's history. I mean, we've never built so much stuff in the city of Sioux Falls through our first six months of any year in our city's history. I mean, you see it, it's about $408 million worth. Now, I can't guarantee this, but there is a really solid chance that we are going to break that construction record for a fourth straight year. There's a number of things that are kind of sitting there on that shelf, especially in that floodplain, and Mike Cooper, Jeff Schmidt, and others will tell you, there's some pretty phenomenal projects that are waiting in the wings. Why is that important? Well, that is important because construction ultimately drives property tax revenues, too. And just kind of give you a quick synopsis, there's really two big ways that we pay for government, sales tax revenues, and property tax revenues. This is interesting. In this budget, okay, we are going to reflect a growth rate in 2017 of about 3.7% when it comes to that property tax growth rate. However, get ready, council, we are projecting a 0% CPI adjustment, okay? 0%. That does not happen very often in the city of Sioux Falls. It just does not. It's actually the second time that that's happened in the last 10 years. The last time was about 2011. So again, that does impact our revenues as well. Now, in Sioux Falls and all across South Dakota, I mean, here's the deal. Our citizens, we are always concerned about debt, and we should be. So am I. So is the city team, and Sioux Falls, so is this city council. They are, they're concerned about debt. We have been very, very prudent, and yes, we do have very affordable debt levels in the city. We enjoy one of the highest bond ratings in the country. It is top tier, folks, it is. Our debt is a very, very small percentage of our budget as a whole. In fact, when you look at our overall budget, debt accounts for about 8% of what we spend. And you should also be aware that we are aggressive when it comes to paying off principal. We're paying off about $25 million worth of our principal every year. Now, council, get ready, I'm going to keep talking about debt over the next 30 minutes, so get ready. I'm not done. There's more debt talk to come. We have a solid rainy day fund. We do. And that's not because the mayor deems it so, Sioux Falls, it's because the council deems it so, okay? This is a team gig here. Our city council, years ago, they felt that a prudent thing to do was to have at least 25% of our operating cash in reserve, and we do. I mean, can you imagine this? In the city of Sioux Falls, we can actually operate our city government for three months without even bringing in another buck. I mean, that's almost unheard of, but we do it here in Sioux Falls, and our city council wanted that to happen, and that's what we managed to. We do, we plan ahead, we strategically build and use these reserves to soften the impact to our operating budget. You know, for example, when we open up new facilities, like we're going to do with the new Midco Aquatic Center, for example, new fire stations, the ones that we just got done opening, and others that we have planned that you're going to hear about in this budget, as well as things like a Kaylee Library remodel project. Those are always important things to have reserves for. Now, we added about $5 million in reserves, council, from 2010 to 2014. For the first time since I've been your mayor, we did utilize some of those reserve dollars in 2015 in the amount of about $2.5 million. Utilities, kind of boring. Mark is excited about it, and I know the team's excited about it, but our utilities, they have a really, really rock-solid financial foundation. And again, I'm not trying to pump up this council too much, okay? But here's some reality, folks. Thanks to the city council, they have been prudent, they have been responsible, they have been forward-thinking, and they did something really, really hard and incredibly unpopular. They actually approved rates for our utilities that not only help us now, but that'll take care of us for way into the future. That's a big thing, 2017, 2018, 2019, long after I'm done being mayor. These rates have already been determined, and they will help set the stage for our utilities, for our city, long after I'm done being your mayor. Thank you, council. I really appreciate it. Proud of your leadership, and more good things to come. Now, it's kind of where we're at. Where were we heading, Sioux Falls? You know, how does 17 look? What's this budget that we're recommending? What's it all about? Well, the first slide, I think, kind of gives you a good flavor. We're not planning on growing government in Sioux Falls in 2017. In fact, we're presenting a budget that's actually smaller than last year's. We are. In business, we call it pretty much, it's just flat. It's flat. And I think that's fair. We are trying to do whatever we can to make government more efficient, more productive, and in 17, I'm really, really proud of what our plans are to ultimately make that happen. We're going to spend about $467 million if it is ultimately approved by the council. Revenues. Take a look at this, council, again. When it comes to our budget, it really comes down to, you know, how do we pay for things? It's through taxes. About 44% that is our largest source. But also, again, those charges for service, setting those responsible rates, those are critical because you're going to see almost a third of our budget, that revenue comes from those user fees, those people paying for things that the city is providing. Counselors, especially the new folks, the new folks. It's also why I strongly urge you to consider, you know, when you're evaluating this budget and in the budget in the years to come, you know, I strongly would urge you to consider to have the users pay their fair share for the things that they're either using in terms of the facilities or the services that are being provided. Whenever that is appropriate, I would strongly urge you to do that. Because not only do I think it's the fair thing to do, I really do think it's the fair thing to do in the eyes of the citizens of Sioux Falls, the taxpayers. There is a strong feeling out there, and I don't know if you've felt it yet, but there is a feeling out there that there are folks who say, you know, if somebody's going to use it, they should help pay for it as well. Again, planning, again, about $467 million in expenses, and I do want to talk about debt again, I do. Our debt rating is an AA2 debt rating, again, one of the strongest. And again, that debt rating just doesn't come out of thin air. You have to earn it. And in Sioux Falls, because we only have 8% debt service expense, that is considered strong to very, very strong for our rating purposes. So let's talk about where, again, where is this money going? And I apologize, council, but let's talk about debt. Let's talk about tax-supported debt service, okay? Look at that number of your taxpayer dollars, Sioux Falls, your taxpayer dollars. 4% goes to debt service here in Sioux Falls. I said 4%. I didn't say 14%. I didn't say 40%. 4% of your tax dollars is going to pay off debt. Whenever you hear someone talking about, you know, city debt, and they want to try to portray it as this doomsday scenario, or you may hear, you know, this spending that's out of control, this picture that's often provided, it's just not true. It's not factual. 4% of our sales tax dollars goes to paying off debt in the spirit of making good things happen for our city. We talked about the capital plan. Sioux Falls, that's where we build stuff, okay? Now, I want to talk to you about, it's called the general fund, or this general fund budget, and the council knows this, but Sioux Falls, I want you to be aware, that's how we operate stuff or run stuff, and that's what we're going to talk about now. Here's where your money's going, and it should. About 39% of that $159 million that we're encouraging the council to spend goes towards public safety. Another big chunk goes towards highways and streets, and then parks and recreation. Let's look at our expenditures in 17 and compare them to kind of where we're at in 16. And again, I think whether it be the media, whether it be the citizens, whether it be the council, I want to make you aware, it's pretty flat. We're not growing government, at least that's what we're recommending. When you compare our 16 numbers to 17 numbers, you're going to see those expenditures are indeed to flat or actually lower from where they were last year. I wanted to give you a visual idea. You know, so often we talk about that taxpayer buck, that dollar bill. So I wanted to kind of give you a flavor, kind of a visual indication of where your buck is going. And just kind of look at it. Public safety in streets makes up about a little over half of that, or just about half of your spending, and then you can see where the rest of the money is going. When it comes to prioritization, and councilors, that's kind of how I kicked off this presentation to you and to the people today, and I told you about how this prioritization thing is so tough. Because again, we all have different beliefs on what is important and what's a want, what's a need, what's a necessity, and what's kind of a nicety. Kind of give you a flavor of kind of what we were thinking when it comes to the priorities for 2017. Here we go. I do believe that we should live within our means. We do believe that we should maintain solid reserves. We do believe that we should keep our debt levels prudent. We realize we've got a growing city, and we better stay one step ahead of it, as well as, one of the things that folks are probably still getting used to with me as their mayor and the city team, is that I just strongly believe that if there are opportunities, we should try to capture them as best we can, and if there are issues, we should do our best to address them as best we can. I don't think we should just leave them to future generations, and I certainly don't believe that we should leave them to future public servants as well. So what are those priorities? Hey, here's the deal. Again, if you're living in a town where you don't feel safe, you don't have a very good quality of life. That's why we do want to protect our people. We are proposing adding more police officers to our team, in fact, four new ones. Counselors, these are the only positions. Counselor Staley, I'm going to talk to you directly here. Counselor Staley, these are the only four positions that we are recommending from our general fund. Okay, that's it. We've added 45 police officers or positions since 2006 if you approve these four on top of it. This public safety component, again, things are evolving, things are changing, and we have to evolve and change with it. There is a public safety component within the budget that we just believe it's really critical as we move forward, and because there's some big investments that we want to make, such as, you know, where's that next fire station going to go? How will it interact with training and some of those needs and service delivery? My gosh, I've got people like Council Chair Rolfing and Counselor Erickson and others that are talking about collaboration. That's one of the things that the study will address as well. And in our budget, we are saying that this fire station number 12 will be operational by 2020. That's again, if the council concurs. Another high critical item is our team, our employees. We need to keep investing in them, council, we just do. Competition is high. We've got a 2.1% unemployment rate. These folks within city government, they can go wherever they want. They can. They can. These are good people. They're as good as they come. They want good salaries, they want good benefits, they want a good work environment, and that competition is high, and we need to recognize that. At the same time, when we do have these folks working with us, and yes, for us on our behalf, we do have to understand what we do, it does impact morale, their productivity, their quality, as well as hiring future employees or retaining those that we have. This is interesting, and when you get into this government role, you're going to find that these folks, they're critical, but it's a pretty solid investment, too. Within this budget, councilors, we're going to add about $1.4 million to support the full-time wages of our city team, and that includes part-time wages as well. And health insurance, something that has been creeping up on America in a monster way, is now actually starting to impact city of Sioux Falls government employees and us as well. We've held off on it really, really well. In fact, for the first time in 10 years, and this is unheard of, but really for 10 years, we didn't have to adjust our health insurance premiums. We did it for the first time in 2016, and council, I need to let you know, we're recommending that we do it again in 2017. That is really expensive. In Sioux Falls, and it's different than in small and large businesses, but you do need to know that as a city team, we believe it's right to pay 75% of that health insurance premium while the employee pays 25%. Oh, and we might as well talk about this. You know, building stuff is one thing, operating it is another, right, Counselor Nitzer? I'm with you. In this budget, there are some impacts with the Midco Aquatic Center. And, you know, it's quality of life investment, we think it's the right one to do, but it is going to be an expensive thing to operate. Again, I wanted to give you a visual presentation in terms of where does your dollar go? And when it comes to this general fund or this operating fund, Sioux Falls, it's people. It's your people. It's your city employees. That's what you're investing in, and you can see that about seven out of every 10 pennies goes towards these people, these men and women that are working for you. Repair, rebuild, replace, I don't want to talk all day about it, but we're going to invest about $85 million in street and utility infrastructure. That's 840 blocks of streets that are going to get repaired in this recommended budget, and it's kind of fun. You know, a mile and a half of water mains, I mean, just confounds me that we talk about it in that level, but the reality is that we do. Quality of life, you know, hey, mayor, come on, that Midco Aquatic Center, yeah, I know that we've been talking about it since 1951. You know, I know that, and I know a lot of people want it, but boy, it's going to be expensive to operate. It is. It is. I'm not going to pull any punches like the Sioux Falls. It is. We're projecting right now revenues of about a million bucks, and councilors, we're projecting expenses of about a million five, okay? This new Midco Aquatic Center is not projected, and we've never talked about it, that it's going to operate in the black. It's not. It's not. In fact, it looks like the net expense will be about $500,000 a year. In this budget, we've added about $1.1 million in new expense from that new Midco Aquatics facility. That's the reality, folks, it is. You build things, but you have to operate them as well. And just wanted to have a heart-to-heart conversation with our council team. Now, councilors, I actually do think it's possible to operate that in the black. I do. I do. But I'm going to take you back, going to take you back to that conversation that we had about, you know, who should pay for it? Should the users pay more for that facility or more for that benefit that they get? I personally believe that when it's appropriate, they should. So again, just one of the options that you have as a council, when we talk about how to operate that, how to operate that, how to operate that, how to operate that, how
when we talk about how do we pay for stuff in Sioux Falls, especially that quality of life stuff. It's not just the Midco Aquatics facility that's in our budget, but also some other things like our park system, whether it be an expanded bike trail, and then renovating some of the other parks that we love so much in our great city. Council, again, in the spirit of being open, communicative with you, and as I've learned, you don't like surprises, neither do I. Let's talk about some of these changes that you're going to see in this budget. Again, we've added six new employees, four councillor Staley from the general fund, and two others from the enterprise fund. Sioux Falls, that's six new employees, six, that we're recommending to be added to this ever-growing city of Sioux Falls. And by the time we're done, if it's approved, here's what's serving you, Sioux Falls, one-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-four full-time employees. One-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-four full-time employees. And we're getting our money's worth. We are. We are recommending some organizational changes. We'll talk about more with you about this in the weeks to come. Again, you've heard about this centralizing our park mechanics and our fire mechanics in with our fleet department. We are looking at, taking our GIS team, geographic information system team from engineering, moving that in with central services. And yes, this project management, which has done such wonders for us over the last six to seven years, we are looking at moving them within finance, all in the spirit of making this government more efficient and more productive. There are some other important changes within this recommended budget, council. Let's just talk about another, some of them. We believe that customer demand should play a greater role in terms of how we operate our government. And for example, this is a common sense one. When it comes to, you know, our new pool calendar, in terms of when people can use our pools, we're recommending that it be based on demand. What a concept. But we are recommending that we open our pools when the Sioux Falls schools open or let out. And we believe that closing at eight P M. is much more prudent than closing at nine. Because you basically have an hour, but there's hardly anybody there, but yet we're still spending your taxpayer dollar to keep it open. It just doesn't make good business sense nor good common sense. And so many others, whether it be looking at our programming in terms of what can be eliminated. That Forward Sioux Falls contract that I know as a team, we spent a lot of time talking about it. It really now is in their hands when it comes to workforce development. And that's where those dollars should come from and should be spent. Alcohol counseling within our public schools. The school district, they made a decision years ago on what to do with that. The state of South Dakota made a decision on what should happen with that. And we believe that we should follow their lead and do something very, very similar. And you'll hear more about that. We've already talked about centralization of facilities management and centralization of fleet. And my goodness, I'm just so excited about that. Now, there are some challenges. I mean, so often I get accused of, you know, mayor, you only talk about the good stuff, the rosy stuff, you know, the bevy of confidence and getting things done, you know, hey, enough already. Let's talk about some of the challenges that we have as a city. You may not realize this, but we need about six-hundred-and-fifty temporary employees, really, to kind of keep us going. You know, we talked about the twelve-hundred-plus full-time employees, but we also have this incredible pool of temporary or part-timers that we need too. The low unemployment rate is definitely impacting us. It is, it's impacting us and everybody else. Well, within this budget, you also have to be aware that the Affordable Care Act, it has impacted our, in terms of even how government is doing business, in terms of, you know, those temporary hours, those temporary benefits. And so that is going to impact us and has impacted us, and you'll see it within this budget. Bill O'Toole will tell you more. Affordable housing. I've got a great city, so many good things happening. But the reality is, is that we've got people who are looking for, you know, a better place to live or affordable place to live, and it really is challenging in the city of Sioux Falls. It is, it is. And, I mean, we've got older homes that are being purchased by folks who are remodeling them, and we've got property that has not been utilized at the highest level. Now that's getting purchased and great things are happening, but there are folks that are being impacted. And those are those that are looking for affordable housing. You are going to see that we are, Darren Ketchum and team, they're going to talk about some changes that we believe will give us a greater return on our investment. And that investment in two thousand and seventeen is going to be about four-point-eight million dollars. One of the largest, if not the largest, in our city's history when it comes to affordable housing here in Sioux Falls. Now get ready. There is a challenge that this mayor and the executive branch, you know, we've been trying to send signals that there is, there's this train coming. And it's heading right for us. Started talking about it probably five years ago. And, you know, the years have gone by. We've had, you know, a ton of discussion. We've had a bevy of meetings. We've had a ton of studies, many of which were driven by city council. And certainly, I value that and I respect that. Some progress has been made. But because of the scrutiny of the dialogue, because of the passionate voices that we've listened to and engaged, listening to their concerns. Council, I got to tell you one last time, and this will be it, okay? Tracy, don't let me do it next year, okay? Not enough has been done. The topic involves public transportation in our town. This is a tough topic, but it can't wait any longer. It can't. We have one of the highest per capita city contribution rates, maybe in the Midwest and maybe the country. At least within our eleven-state upper Midwest area. We have one of the highest contribution rates when it comes to public transportation. We're investing a ton of money into public transportation. We really are. Our paratransit services and our expenses, they're just flat out, they're just not in line with what other cities do. And we've had the debate. And again, the reality is, we're not in line. The agency trips, they are the primary driver of these paratransit costs, they are. However, we've got to find a way to make them more coordinated, and we better find a way to make them more cost-effective for the taxpayers of Sioux Falls. We've got to do it. And these fares and these revenue increases that we've talked about for well over five years, we've made progress, we have, and I don't want to minimize that. It's not been enough. It's not been aggressive enough. And you know, as well as anybody, that these demands for more services, more routes, more options, more hours, it is only growing, it is only getting greater. And we've got people moving in here, three to four thousand strong a year, that are used to public transportation at a different level. The problem continues, Sioux Falls, it does. And the answer is not more city funding. It's not. Mike Cooper and Sam Trubilcock, I flat-out asked him, I said, how much more time do we have? What's the end date where this train is going to nail us? They said, mayor, it's about five years. It's about five years, okay? I'm not going to talk about it anymore. I'm not. I don't know what more I can do to relay the strength of this one. This is a tough one, it's going to take all kinds of leadership, all kinds of scrutiny, but what we're doing today is not the answer. And the answer is not throwing more money at it from the taxpayers. Now, there's a lot of great opportunities that are being captured, and the taxpayers are winning. I could talk over and over again about all the things that we're doing, this fun stuff, but, you know, we're spending a dollar today strategically maintaining our streets, and when we do that, it saves us, you know, eight dollars of spending later on. I mean, just so proud of that, so proud of that. We are actually using less pothole patching material today than we have been. Why? Because you folks want us to proactively address these streets, and we are. I just love that. LED streetlights, we are spending less on electricity than we have in the past, as well as less in maintenance because of things like that. This Lewis and Clark thing that the city council invested in years ago and made happen. Now, we're working in collaboration with Lewis and Clark, and we're actually finding a way to drive down the costs to providing water to our great citizens. And on and on and on. We're doing street sweeping right now in Sioux Falls. Our financial analysts and our public works team, Galen Huber and so many others. My gosh, the way we normally sweep our streets is we have two street sweepers. One goes first, then the one goes beside it. They do that the first time, and really it makes sense, but that second time they do it, and that third time they do it, now they're going to use one street sweeper. Brilliant. Instead of two. And then we take that money, we take those resources, we take that equipment, and we go do something else for the taxpayers. It's a simple thing, but this is what your twelve-hundred city employees, this is what your financial analysts are working to do on your behalf. And you're going to see that within the budget council, and the department heads and the financial analysts will tell you more. I am proud. The last budget meeting that we had with the team, I got emotional, I did. Because I had this vision when I was first elected and what I thought that we could accomplish when it came to this budgeting process, and we're there. We're there, thank you, team, we're there. And, I mean, I didn't want the departments, and yes, these silos that can be so strong, I didn't want them driving the decision-making for the taxpayer. I wanted that done with the help of the finance team, and now they're driving it, and it's making a huge impact when they're working hand in hand. You know, not every department's ordering their own toilet paper anymore. Can you believe that? We are centralizing stuff, we're doing things that's prudent that you would do in small business or in large business or in your family. We're doing these things like not allowing everybody to order their own software programs anymore. Now it's done methodically and prudently so that everything works together. I told you about the nineteen-eighties financial management software. I mean, how embarrassing is that? I mean, look at these numbers, look how large they are. Now we are using the highest level of technology councillor Knightsard, that we can find, and ultimately it's paying good dividends, and it gives us the data, it gives us the reports, and it gives us the information that not only do you crave as a new councillor, but we crave it as well. And it helps us get better as a team and find more bang for that buck. As well as councillor Staley, you know, our first answer is not just, we're just going to throw more bodies at it. It's not the right thing to do. You don't do it in business, and you shouldn't do it in government. And I think you're seeing that, we're only hiring six employees, or recommending that we hire six employees. And what's happening is that these city employees, twelve-hundred-and-thirty-four strong, they are thinking outside of the box, they are making mistakes, they are dreaming bigger, and they are working hard on behalf of the taxpayers. I'm almost done. At one forty-eight P M., I turn and getting ready for the presentation, and all of a sudden, there's a memo from Chief Jim Sideris to Tracy Turbach and myself. Chief, are you here? Chief is here. Sorry, chief, I didn't give you any warning, get ready. Chief Sideris sends this memo to Mike Huether and Tracy Turbach, and council, I'll share it with you. And media, I'll share it with you too. Chief Sideris writes, "The most significant change that has benefited Sioux Falls Fire and Rescue was the inclusion of our financial analyst, Christopher Stussy, in the majority of our purchasing and financial issues. That has considerably helped us in looking at ways, or looking at things we didn't fully consider before, such as our returns on investment, inventory turns, the optimization of budget procedures." Sounds like a business guy, chief. "We are now able to look at our organization using the same type of analytics used by other industries to justify our purchasing, investments in equipment, and long-term projections and priorities. This change in thought process over the last couple of years has allowed us to examine and capitalize on opportunities in all aspects of the department. This makes us more responsible to the budgetary process as well as to the taxpayer." I'm so proud, so proud of how far we've come. I'm really excited about our future. I look forward to the dialogue, council. Welcome, new councillors, to this part of your role. I think you're truly going to enjoy it. Right now, it's in your capable hands. Make it a great day, everybody, thank you. Councilor Chair Rolfing? Motion to adjourn? Thank you. Is there a second on that? Signing by councillor Urban Bach, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.